Well.
We're taking the.
I can say.
You know, it's not even sound.
But you're ready to come on.
Yeah.
That's why I'm here.
It can be like.
We're not going to stop.
That's all.
Well, we're just.
Well, that's.
And.
And then.
Just.
Not really decided.
No.
Pretty.
But.
It's not.
And then.
It's.
But.
I would see.
When they're big rights.
So selling the courses.
Quiet.
Sure.
They gave them up.
They're in the.
Try.
Now.
Just about.
She's.
But we didn't know.
People.
Like.
I was asked.
So.
Because.
I don't.
Just.
So.
And.
I don't try.
I mean.
I don't know.
And so.
You want to.
You should.
More.
Then.
Which is.
I'm very.
Kind of.
Kind of.
It's been.
It's been.
Twenty years.
Even.
I got.
I don't get.
Still.
Yeah.
I do.
My.
I think.
I don't.
I.
I don't.
I'm trying.
Well.
It's.
Good.
Working.
Working.
Yeah.
And.
I wonder if.
It's.
Well, ask.
It's always.
There.
When she looks.
It's.
First.
Well.
I was looking.
It's.
I actually.
Wasn't.
They.
That was.
It's.
I might.
And.
Then.
You want to.
Think.
The.
Well.
We can.
In the middle.
It's.
Yeah.
I better turn it off.
We went to a new format with the Zoom. Do guys? Um. Have we got John in there?
Not yet.
We've been.
Yeah.
We're just.
When we didn't have anyone in the waiting room, I'm like, oh, gosh. So. But when I started popping in, because I'm like. Becca. Dial in real quick.
It works.
Yeah. But. Um. We were. We're just trying to make it as airproof as we can.
Yeah.
Because when we're changing Zoom meetings and the logins, every meeting is then for.
Right now.
Just right now.
Well, we're using some of it.
The worst.
Super.
Your use.
We kill.
So many.
Where. Are they going to do a separate?
It's going to be.
His own.
Um, no. We're going to keep running out of this.
Okay.
I think.
That's.
I think.
The call.
Um.
Get any.
P R.
This.
Okay.
If.
Then.
Yeah.
This is going this week.
I'm saying.
So.
Yeah. Okay. All right. It's six o'clock. I'm going to go ahead and. I'll be making.
Work.
Back. For. Paul. Please. Mike Burke.
Frozen.
Sandra Gerlach.
Here.
Christine. For Sharon. Oh, she just lost. Okay, I'll come back. I'm reading.
I don't know.
Yeah. Tom Stewart.
Yes.
Monica McHugh.
Here.
Guy.
Nathan.
Chris. And you want to say.
Yeah, I'm here. Sorry.
We can.
You're fine. We are fine.
All right. Do we have? An approval of the minutes or the joint work session minutes in the November seventh meeting? Do I have a motion? Do I have a motion? Or are there any fresh corrections or additions?
Can I just restate that?
Yes.
How about the meeting from October twenty first?
Oh, that's.
And sorry, work sessions on November seventh.
Thank you.
Yep. Think you want to do them simultaneously or?
Yeah, we'll go.
Same.
Simultaneously.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Sure.
And I have a second. Is there any other discussions or any other additions or? That need to be made to those two minute meeting minutes? If not, I'll go ahead and call for an approval vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Now. On the window. Lori, you want to walk us through?
Yep. Here, I'm going to bring up the document. So others can follow.
You have three minutes. Um. There's. That's still a ten, right? No, back to you, guys.
This is on the. Um.
That's the packet.
That's the packet.
Yeah. We want to update it one.
Come today.
Yeah.
Okay.
Got it.
Okay.
All right.
Most current.
Orders. Um. I know Lori and I have had kind of some emails back and forth on. On this one. I'm adding into the purpose. Um. Lori, you want to kind of give a little background on this?
On, on the purpose?
Yeah.
Okay, so back in September, we removed some language that. Gosh, I wish I would have had that language in front of me, Monica, now.
I know.
Um. We. There was part of this that. We. The red part is replacing. And. Pretty much, the language, I'm going to paraphrase this, said that we're looking to. Write the ordinance so that people can make money on their land and to broaden the development of wind energy and. And broaden the development of wind, wind and rain in our county. Um. And we took that language out and we needed to replace it. And so the new language that's inserted in that place. Is all the while balancing the concerns of preserving the natural beauty, visual resources, protecting natural resources, water quality, and the wildlife of Jackson County, Iowa. Because that better explains where we were headed with our ordinance. And the old stuff was just boilerplate that probably dozens of other counties used in the past. And that doesn't fit what we're trying to do. And we might go back to this at the very end.
Okay.
When we get to the part about the protection. Um. The protection. Let's see. Element buffers around appropriated limits within Jackson County.
Okay.
So we might want to go back and revisit this and add another. Phrase or sentence that goes along with that. So. So far, are we okay to continue with that language?
Yes, I think so. Are we correcting things here?
No.
Okay.
Send it to me later. Is that, is that appropriate, Monica? I don't want to speak out of turn.
It's corrected up there, but it's not corrected on our hard copy self.
Yeah.
No, I'm just saying.
There's another admittance, Lori, in the.
Thank you.
Is it something that's just grammar or is it context?
I would just maybe suggest wholesale or retail markets while balancing and leave out all the one, all the.
Okay. I thought, sorry, I thought it was going to be a period or, or, yeah. Thank you. And then leave out the semicolon then.
Mm hmm.
Okay, we got it. Thank you.
Just to make it read a little.
Yeah.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay.
Okay.
So. Um. We're going to go down to the definitions for fall zones. I'm going to move this a little bit aside. And see. I'm going to do this soon. Um. So in the definitions. Fall zone. So we're no longer, to the best of my knowledge, anywhere in the ordinance. Using fall zone language. We have property line setbacks. For, for everything we're using at this time. Um. We might want to consider removing this at the very end if we don't add anything for fall zone going forward. Um, the only thing I can see potentially is if we make any changes to the non-commercial.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And then too, we might want to discuss something else with that. The more I dig, I'm kind of like, oh, I don't know that this is what we really. Need to.
Yeah.
Um. And I'll explain when we get there. Otherwise, I could jump around like crazy, but I don't want to do that to you guys.
Thank you.
Yeah. Um. Same thing in the definitions on page three. Under residence. We may need, we may go to remove that definition. Um. Um. But most of it pertains to sound and shadow flicker.
Right.
And we're changing that to property line.
Right.
For the shadow flicker and the, the sound.
Mm hmm.
So that may be irrelevant also unless it relates back to non-commercial.
Okay.
All right. So the next part is sensitive areas. Um. I used some research with. Um. Iowa D N R. Minnesota State. Um, because they have some buffer areas around, um, natural resources. So I use this definition and we, we don't have to stick with it. We can change it if we find better, better language. But basically, it's a geographic area defined by natural features where there's a significant risk of groundwater degradation from activity, activities conducted at, under, or near the land surface. Uh, since. A sensitive area includes, but not limited to sinkholes, rivers, streams, creeks, natural springs, lakes, and farm ponds. And I dig it around. We, there might be one other phrase that we might want to include. Let me see if that map loaded. No, it didn't. Darn it. Um. I don't know if it's a big deal. Um, but public water supplies. And there's, there's a few out there in the rural, um, but most of the public water supplies that would have, um. Sinkholes or anything else, they might have a pond or other things that would also. Keep them from developing within that area. But we can consider adding public water supplies if you wanted to.
I'd be more apt to add. The. Public water supply. Rather than the farm ponds.
Some of them are farm or spring fed. But then again, spring, natural spring or steep springs would.
Natural spring.
Right. Because you can, you can make your farm ponds, obviously. You can put a farm pond out there. Um.
We can delete that. I mean, whatever you guys decide.
I like farm ponds in there. We actually have a constructed farm pond that I think has been there forty years and we do have it stocked with fish.
And we tend to also to keep it. I do think we need to have in the public. Water supply.
Public water supply, yes.
I agree with that.
Is that a consensus?
Yeah. As long as it's, we're just talking the definition here. It seems like that. It did have a definition.
Mm hmm. Okay. And the reason I stumbled on that, that website I can't get to load. Um. Had. Um. Let me just see if I can get it now. Maybe it'll pop in. Oh.
They can't wait to have to just stop.
Got it, you guys. Um. I'll kind of show you where, where that came from. There are certain things that are pertinent to us that I just want to get rid of. Those are, those are non-sinkholes in our county. And I want to get one more layer up. Public water supplies. No one see it? There we go. All right. So we have.
Zoom in a little bit.
I'm going to go ahead and take it to the northwest side of the county here. You can see this is, all this area is up around the north board, Lidos Creek. Um. And you can see how many sinkholes are in that area.
Oh, I know there's a lot. I know there's a lot in that area.
Okay. So. I, if I, if, if we can, let me just jump you guys to the language that this is going to pertain to on page six. From page number twenty one. Applicants shall provide mapping of any sensitive areas with one thousand three hundred and twenty feet radius of the proposed site. No turbines shall be built within a thousand foot deep of any known mapped sensitive areas. So you can see where we're pulling, pulling that back in. So for turbines built between a thousand and thirteen hundred and twenty feet of a sensitive area, mitigation plans would show as a buffer strip of perennial grasses or native trees with a minimum of thirty foot around the sensitive area and a timeline for completion within thirty days of the erection of the turbine. Um. This isn't, this is language you guys. Asked for about the, the sinkholes, but I. Also know there was discussion about waterways. Mike was very vocal about that.
Mm hmm.
This ties it all in together. Um. And two, I'm not sure how to word. We might need to refine that. Does it need to say before the turbine's operation or before, before the turbine is operational or before fluids are added to the turbine?
Before the turbine is operational, I would say. Anybody else have any?
You know, you're in control of the part.
Okay.
Yeah, I think it's before.
Okay. All right, so I, it probably fits what we have then. Um. A timeline. Which, okay, now we want to add before it's operational.
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah. All right. So now we can jump back to those definitions, but you can see, well, let's just discussion on this right now.
Page six there?
Pardon me? On page six? If you guys want to stay on page six, we can. If you guys have discussion or we can come back to it. Do we need to expand?
I think. I don't know. Do we, does anybody think we need to expand that or do we need to go back to our definitions and, and continue with everything?
Go back and then. Catch. Go way through that.
Got it. Um, under setbacks, so right underneath sensitive areas. Um. Added, added additional wording to that. The minimum required distance from a property line was what they originally had for setback. And, um, added or other point of reference because we're using, um, power lines. Um. Right away is part of the. The setback wording in there. So I felt that this need to be expanded to cover things so we didn't miss it. Because it's not just.
Power line.
Okay. All right. So page four, there's a new definition in there. Visual resources. And. Um, visual resources, the natural character of the county, including topographical, waterways, wetlands, scenic views, natural vegetation, and wooded areas. The new definition relates to section eight that is new to you guys this time around and it was, um. Added for, um. Water quality protections. And then also goes back to, um. Um. The scenic byways. It hits a bell.
Okay.
Good.
Lauren, can you put it back for them? Please?
Yeah.
Yeah. There's another admittance. Pardon me? There's another admittance.
Thank you. Okay. So do you guys have any concerns with that new definition?
No, we might after missing section eight, but no, I think that's.
Okay. And we can go back to that. We need to. All right. Page five, the highlighted part under, um. We are missing a. Page. Oh. Look at them. Um, undersighting and approval. Um, requirements. So under number fifteen, we're going to open Pandora's box here, you guys.
Okay.
I know we are.
You already did.
Yeah. I know. Um. So just so everybody can hear the thought, or unless Monica, you want to run with it.
Well, the, the thought is when we're looking at owner's property. We want to be fair to everybody. However. The concern is why is the county getting in the middle of a property owner? Who holds a contract with a wind turbine company on cleanup? Now, obviously, if there is a water quality issue, um, the D N R would jump in. But why are we dictating? A decommissioning with a property owner? Do we require farms that say tear down a barn? To remove.
Or don't tear down a barn.
Or don't tear down a barn? Do we require them, you know, if they're not using the barn, do we require them to tear it down? No. Do we also, you know, how many old houses are out there? Do we require property owners to tear out the basements? Um. I have a really difficult time telling a landowner. What to do with their property after, after decommissioning. Um. I know some people don't want to hear that, but on the other hand, if we start opening this and telling landowners after a turbine is done, that they have to, you know, dig it up or deal with the land company, then why aren't we doing this with everybody else? We've got old barns out there. We've got old, um. I'm sure there are old hog pits that are out there. My concern is. An empty hog pit is worse than concrete.
Mm hmm.
So we're not telling former, um, pig facilities to tear out. Their pits, but we're telling the wind turbine people to do it. I have a very difficult time getting in between a landowner and their contract with the wind turbine company. Why are, why isn't the landowner dictating this in their contract? I don't think the county should be doing this and should be determining what to be done on a private land.
As far as below the ground.
Right.
If, if you guys remember, um, there was talk, right now, the way it's written further in is four feet below the ground surface. There was discussion, it's like, well, what about six? Why not eight? Why not twelve?
Why not?
What about the tiling? And it's like, why is that the county's issue? You know, to tell. The farmer needs to be talking about this ahead of time. Um. For us to say they have to go ten feet or twelve feet.
I'm sorry, in my opinion. I don't want to dict, I don't want to dictate stupidity. Um. If you're a landowner and you're entering into a contract. You need to be responsible and take it to an attorney and figure it out on your own. The county shouldn't be responsible to tell you how to read a contract or do a contract. And. So I do have an issue with us telling them about the decommissioning.
So if, if the ordinance doesn't cover that, what's to stop the landowner from just leaving it all up? Are we just talking below the ground?
I think below the.
Below the ground.
Yeah. Yeah, because there, there will be a decommissioning plan for any, you know, ways. I mean, there, there will be. There, where we got, where we got into this is, you know, how far below the ground or do we go below the ground? And I've been rolling this around a lot since we talked.
Hmm.
And I see the logic in, you know, saying that, okay, the landowner decides, you know, or, you know, does have the concrete base there so many feet below the ground because of the existing decommissioning plan. Well, then that goes with the, that goes with the land. You know, if he's going to sell it, then, you know, the other person is taking that on.
Right.
So.
And that should, that information should follow the land, which gets into the next part of this. We had. Followed other county ordinance.
Right.
And the more, and after I say this, just give it a second to sink in. We've blindly followed other counties and. The county is holding the bond money for decommissioning. So basically, if something happens that. The company defaults, it's coming back on the county. We didn't make that agreement with the.
Right.
With the turbine company. It's on that owner's land. Um, and typically, when there's a building on leased land, so like someone puts some mobile home on, on your farm and then they move off, you become responsible for those taxes and that dwelling, some sits on your underlying ground. So why are we putting that burden back on our, on our county, in our county, um. Taxpayer? Um. When it's, isn't there some culpability with the landlord?
Well, that's just it. I mean, if, if they want it. Um. Why are we, why are we dictating this to the, to the property owner?
Mm hmm.
I mean, I have. I really have. A problem with this because. We're trying to put the, the underground. Back on the county to enforce it.
Mm hmm. Well, we're setting, we're setting the parameters for someone else's land.
Right. You know, if we were putting this up on county land, it'd be a different story.
Mm hmm.
But if I'm going to enter into a contract with somebody. I mean, there's certain things that I'm going to have in it. And. I would expect the landowner to be contacting an attorney. You know. I just have, I have a difficult time with us trying to tell people how to operate other land. We had a, we had an old cistern on our land. And that had to be removed. We had to take care of that. It was part of ours. So, it was our responsibility when, when we had to redo some septic things. Why should the county be responsible for that? I, I just, I'm really having a difficult time with that, with other taxpayers paying for a property owner's. Issue, when it doesn't affect the rest of the county. And the landowner has signed the contract.
Did, did you get a chance to talk to, um, John about whether or not, you know. We had talked about, okay, is the county gonna be liable? Is this a burden on taxpayers?
That's something we'll probably be getting back with on this week, there's a lot going on there too.
Yeah, I know, that's, but that was my question, is, is, is it, you know, cause. Then, yeah, I, I can see a problem with it if we're laying it back on the, you know, the taxpayer later on.
So we know we're gonna be revisiting. We're gonna be revisiting this at some point.
Yeah, I just, it is a private contract. Right, it is, you know, and. Personally, I don't want, don't want to tell you what to do with my property, so. And why shouldn't, here's my comment, why shouldn't the landowner be responsible for this? They're entering into the private contract. The county isn't gonna see the contract.
No, we're not privy to it.
Right, we're not privy to it, so why, why are we telling them what has to be in it? I just, I, yeah, I don't want the county to come in and.
As a landlord, when you go into any kind of contract as a person, as an individual. You should, you know, make sure that the i's are dotted and p's are crossed. This wouldn't be any different. So. I think the responsibility is on the landlord who signs the contract. And then I know there's, you know, discussion, and we've all read the, the letters and stuff about. What's going on in Cedar County and the money that's coming back on, um. The private property owner because of the default of the, of the wind turbine company. So it kinda left them hanging on those prototypes.
But what are they doing? So, obviously, they signed a contract. They have been compensated for that, we have no idea how much they're being compensated for. I mean, for regular turbines, I have an idea. But, and I know they're, they're upset about the cleanup. But on the other hand, they have gotten, they signed a contract. With, that pays them the compensation. So why aren't they cleaning up that, cleaning up the fields with the compensation that they received?
Probably not as much as they received, I mean, they received less.
You know what, and it may not be, but on the other hand.
They signed a contract.
They signed a contract, exactly. So, you know, there's responsibility there, I know it's for. Woe is me, because this company's prototype turbines did not, you know, have issues.
This will be something we're gonna be revisiting after we get, after we talk more in depth with. So.
I just, I, I do have an issue with. What they have to do underground, I mean, obviously above ground, you know, there, there should be a plan, but underground, it. It's the property owner.
And above ground is contaminants, leakage.
Right.
Um, other, other damage that could occur after, you know, after, afterwards, so that's. I can see why we're involved in, I mean, setting the parameters, but when it goes back to carrying the bond, I still don't.
I, I.
Know about that.
And I would, I would agree, I kinda have an issue with that as well.
So, but do you wanna table this, if that works, or we'll come back to it rather?
Yeah.
Okay. And I do have an email out to John about that.
Right.
This week is, I'm sure we'll be hearing that.
I don't understand why they can't answer all of those only people's questions.
I understand, there's a lot of moving parts, um. And if their offices like mine, um, truly, you guys, I am overwhelmed right now, and, um.
Well, if criminals would stop committing crimes, they might have some. Hundred indictable cases.
I know, and I get, I get that they have a lot on their plate, um. Yeah. So, but anyway, so we've moved past that. On the sighting and the questions on number fifteen there. And we're gonna move on, because we know we're gonna put that to rest for right now. And number eighteen. I, I. In that whole section, we needed to add some, some words there because, um. We were just using the word variance, that doesn't work within our ordinance.
Right.
We needed to add special exception. Or, well, variance or special exception, because most of what's gonna, this, how this is gonna be. Done, if, you know, would ever come to fruition, um, is through special exception ask and not through variances.
And we don't know whether or not, right now, because we're still waiting on the county attorney's office, that if we say no special exception.
Or no waivers?
Or no waivers, we don't know if we can do that or not.
Um, I did a little research. And I believe it's, um, we can choose that, but yes, we do wanna get.
We need to get a, we need to get, yeah.
Yeah. And keep in mind that everything, the. If there was ever, um, a turbine that could make it into our county, it would have to be done by special exception use. Because it's only allowed, it would only be allowed in A1, C1. M1, M2, not R1, well, we never make a setback. Well, it's probably gonna make a setback in the other ones too.
Right.
Um, but it's, it is gonna be special exception use, um, but. But yes, the waivers, I think, oh, I know with the part of the special exception on the setbacks. Which, we might have to do it, um, for the special exception, but. I don't believe you'd have to allow waivers for our neighbor to say, hey, that's cool with me. So, anyway, I guess it's back to number twenty-one, the sensitive areas, did you guys have any? Questions, or you're ready to move to fire suppression?
I think that's, yeah, I don't have any issue with the language in that, maybe like that. All right, that's what we requested.
Yeah. And I. Have it noted here. Where are we? We have a fire suppression part in here, other than just. Um, what's there in twenty-one? You stated in the section, I forgot where are the two.
I've got the safety, I think.
Got it, yeah.
We're, we're gonna have to call them wind turbines and not turbines, because we don't have a definition for turbines.
Okay, where'd I put that?
Every words, everything.
Um, actually, I should be adding, um, changing the word turbine to C-WEX.
Whatever, whatever.
Okay. Okay, um. Yeah, or. It has to be C-WEX.
Yeah.
So we will get that, that fixed. And also Christine, you're still gonna be hearing from me about formatting, okay? Please.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome, thank you. So anyway, the applicant shall provide information, this is still in the application part. Shall provide information for the type of fire suppression and fire detection systems that will be installed. In the C-WEX in substation and how it will be monitored. Um, yes, it's under the safety section. And we didn't make any other changes, um. Until we get down to number six. On waste disposal. I'd like to make a recommendation to replace the forty-five days with immediately.
What does immediately mean?
It means soon as you're done, you just, I, I mean, the.
Give a timeline.
The blades come down. Forty-five days is a long time.
No, I'm not saying, I'm not criticizing forty-five, but I'm just saying immediately doesn't really give you a specific time. You know, I mean, immediately would mean. You know, is it a day, is it two days, is it three days?
And then two, we, we know that if we say two days or three days and. We get five inches of rain, they may not be able to.
You might not be able to do it, yeah, yeah, so I, 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 fine, I.
Right, but forty-five days.
No, I understand, I'm, I'm just saying, I don't think we want the word immediate.
Okay. I would, I would just ask you revisit then the forty-five days.
I think we need to have it less, but I, but.
It's generous.
Um, with the immediate, we don't have. My immediate may not be your definition of immediate. I know that. But you have kids.
Some people. Some people are doing immediately, I think.
Yeah.
So whatever limitations we end up setting, is there gonna be, did you talk to, uh. The county attorney about a fine if they violate that?
We would have to go back into our normal fine schedule.
Right.
Which only maxes out at seven hundred and fifty dollars a day. Which is.
Wasn't the county attorney gonna look into something that was more punitive considering the size of the. I don't know, the cost of the turbines and all of that?
We can ask that again, I believe, um, that was already done and. There wasn't anything we've.
Okay.
We got a little system, anything that's the county attorney question, she's highlighting in yellow, so I can grab it right.
Yeah, I think, Chris, I think we did have an answer on that before.
There was no precedent.
Yeah, from the attorney general.
And, and there is a state maximum, Brandon and I will code, yeah.
So we have to be cognizant of that, so. We can't bill them a million dollars a day or something like that, so we've gotta. We have to be careful with that, but, um. Yeah, like.
I just thought seven hundred and fifty was a little bit.
Oh, I agree.
I don't know.
Enough, but.
A lot of money for us, but not for.
But not for, right.
It's like the.
Uh, but like the forty-five days, I.
With fifteen days?
That's what I was thinking, is fifteen days, does, would everybody agree to fifteen days on waste disposal?
Sure. They had a slight conversation.
I know that, fifteen days for waste disposal instead of forty-five.
Sure, let's do that.
Chris, do you think fifteen days?
Yeah, I would go with fifteen, forty-five is too much.
Okay. And I got something else to throw at you guys, um, to consider please. And at no time shall turbine blades be stored onsite or in a staging facility. Or area in Jackson County.
Yes, I think that should be added.
Any other thoughts?
Read that again, well.
And at no time shall turbine blades be stored onsite. Or in a staging facility in, staging facility or area in Jackson County.
Yeah, okay.
I agree with that, but what about the, uh, we had talked about the cut onsite as well?
That is the next what, or the next note here. There was talk about not being allowed to cut onsite, do we wanna address that or is it a landowner issue?
I honestly think it's a landowner issue.
I'm wondering if it would run off at all if you did cut it onsite and end up affecting neighboring property owners or people downstream.
Windy day. Fiber, fiberglass in the air, that it, it has a potential to affect neighbors.
It does, but on the other hand, this is something that we're dictating that we shouldn't be.
The stuff that was below ground didn't affect the neighbors necessarily, but stuff floating through the air. And getting into the water that runs onto somebody's land does affect someone else.
Well, if you remember right, part of the sighting that you guys have in there now. Um, waterway. Now, let me get to it. One thousand. Apple, um, no turbines, no wex, shall be built within a thousand feet of a known mapped sensitive area. Um, or, in the sensitive area breaks down to, um. Anything that's by sinkhole, rivers, streams, creeks, natural springs, lakes, or farm ponds. So you shouldn't have a, um. A creek there that is within thirteen hundred feet. That is not buffered, and you wouldn't have a creek there that's closer than a thousand feet to, to that site.
But once you cut up the blades, doesn't some of that fiberglass material become airborne? Where it can settle somewhere else?
It's fiberglass and resin, but, you know, anytime you cut stuff up, there's.
There, there's a potential is there, I, yeah.
The potential is there, but I mean, so is the potential when you rip down a building.
Well.
You know, yeah, and asbestos removal.
Yeah, but I was gonna say, they have mitigation for that, you know, and then you just can't tear down asbestos building, you know. Without mitigation.
Right.
Well, you can't, you can get the, the upper big body.
Oh, I know.
So with the decommissioning plan, isn't that something that is already a decommissioning plan? Which part of it, about blades and how they. Blade disposal.
Let's reread that. It talks about. Removal, cost, soil grade. Identify financial resources. We don't tell them how to do their job there.
That's what I'm getting at, are we gonna tell them how to decommission everything? That's, I guess that's my concern.
Well, my concern is, is, you know, we. I have less of a concern for the person whose land it is on. Who has signed a contract and is benefiting from the windmill. I am more concerned about the effects that might happen to a neighbor downwind or, or whatever, if. The decommissioning process would affect them. That, that's, that's where my concern is.
And, and I get that. Um, but how can we dictate their decommissioning?
Well, we're also, if, so if we give the landowner. You know, their responsibility is whatever is underground and. But we're talking about what's above ground now, and how it might, that. Decommissioning might, if it's done improperly, might affect neighboring properties that aren't participating.
And I agree with that, however. Are we experts in decommissioning? And are we gonna tell them how they have to decommission?
I don't think we're experts, but I've gotten to the point where I don't trust the experts.
Well, and, and I don't disagree with that, Chris, but I mean. Um, and I mean, we all see him pull in the, you know, the new blades, how, on, on. With them trucking that in, um.
You never see an old blade.
Right, you never see an old blade going down.
They're always cut up.
Right, they're always cut up and stacked.
My assumption is you cannot haul a broken blade down the road in a piece.
Right. And that's what I wondered about.
So, so it's gotta be cut up, get out of it. So then, so then they're broke or some sort of.
Right.
So then we write into the language something that, i- in the effect of, you know, that, uh, no. You know, no decommissioning can, you know, take place that will affect the neighboring properties, you know. I mean, that's, that's where I'm at, I'm just real concerned, I mean, maybe it's. Maybe it's the only way they do it, but then they need to mitigate the, uh. Uh, the potential risk, you know, I don't want them out there cutting blades up on a super windy day.
Oh, I, I agree with that.
And, and, you know, unless we. Say something about that, you know, what's preventing them from doing it?
Yeah, so that's, that goes back to my question. Is, what is their process? We don't know what their process is, and I think until we know what the process is, I don't think we can say you can't do this or you can't do that.
Okay, well, let's, let's, let's.
Do they have a, do they already have a mitigation where? Do they cover it when they cut and to collect the pieces?
And then, so then it's back to what I was saying is, writing it somehow a caveat that. You know, any decommissioning must be done in a fashion that does not affect. Any downwind or downstream neighbors, you know, so you'd have to, we'd have to work the language on that, but.
I think until we know how they do it.
Well, we don't have to know how they do it, we just tell them what they can't do, and that's affect neighbors.
Especially if we find out how they generally do it and then go from there is how we wanna address that.
But how they're doing it today may change.
Yeah, how they, they may change later, just that, that's why.
I like what Tom is saying.
Yeah, just saying, you know, write it in somehow, you know.
We're, we're telling these people a lot of things that they can't do that we are not experts on.
Right.
A lot of things, so we can't start saying, well, now we're gonna pick this because we're not an expert on this.
I think we're trying, we're, we're, we're recognizing that in. I think we're trying, we're, we're, we're recognizing that and trying to not do so much.
We are, because we've already done, I mean, we've already done a lot of it already. And so. Again, it's one of those where I think that. If you sign the contract to put this up. Then. Guess what? Not only you and the wind turbine company should be responsible for. The issues that pop up, like neighbor issues and things like that. That the landowner, you know, should be responsible for it.
Well, yeah, and 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 again, then if it comes down to litigation because they've done it on improperly and it affects the neighbor. Then it's in our ordinance that they're not supposed to be affecting the neighbor in their decommissioning process. Because it will come down with a game.
We, yeah, I, and I don't, I don't disagree with that. But it's one of those you can't fix stupid if you don't, if you're not making sure your contract is correct.
Good to ask question.
No.
One thing that we don't um. One thing we gotta keep in mind here. We have some pretty steep setbacks from the nearest property line, right? So we're already fifteen hundred feet. So we're over a quarter mile, so. I would hope that some of the mitigations on our end, so I know there's gonna be.
Yeah, I also do, but unless we write it into the ordinance. Then then you don't know what, you know, you can't perceive the unforeseenable.
But the other part of it is you can't stop the litigation, it's gonna happen anyway. But, you know. Right, it's it's not our.
What's she saying?
Protect our residents and check, the problem is.
I'm not gonna protect stupid, I just, I'm sorry, people have to take responsibility for what they sign and what they do. And we cannot, we cannot, we cannot. Put everything plus the kitchen sink in an ordinance to hold everybody's hand to make sure that they take care of their land. If you're a landowner like I am, I wanna protect my property and do what's right. Why are we dictating? How people need to take care of certain things, there's certain things, yes. They need to be aware of, but the other part of it is, we cannot fix everything and stop and stop litigation from everything that happens.
Okay, well, we're gonna, we're gonna disagree on this. And and that's fine, it's not the first time you and I have disagreed on something. And so if it comes down to a vote at some point, I am gonna, I am gonna vote on the side. Of putting some kind of language in here that protects the uh neighbors. From decommissioning process that go wrong.
I would agree with that as well, because, and me too, because we're not totally looking out for the people that are. Willingly or not signing this contract, but also for the people that. Do not sign them and are not involved and don't want them here. We also have to look at for them.
And I don't just, I'm not disagreeing with that. My concern is, we're doing this for wind turbines. When are we gonna start doing this when people put up buildings on their property? And tell them, you know, and if they lease it out. That you need to make sure that when a tornado comes through, you're not spewing prop- spewing debris on everybody else's ground. That's, that's my concern, is that. If we're gonna do it for windmills or the wind turbines, we're gonna have to do it for the other people that are building structures on their property. That have got insulation on them because they're all insulated. And it blows away. Then you need to make sure you go up to your neighbor's property and pick up their grease.
I think wind, windmills are different than a structure, than a site.
I, we launched it during the ratio though. I mean. And you can't.
Hey, I got an idea, let's move on.
Okay with that.
We're kinda spinning our wheels on this one.
I have a note on here. One, just to try to get some information, how they do cut up their blades. And I'm gonna not, I'm gonna reach out to. Some other sources.
Yeah.
And.
Find out first.
And then through the fashion, um, some language. That shows it doesn't affect neighboring property when they're doing such action. And also, I wanted to clarify with you guys, because I know we're not doing public comments. So I am not looking at any other things coming in, okay, I just wanted to. Follow the rules here.
Okay.
All right, so we're moving on that, and we have, like I said, a note. And she has in hers, Lori Action, and I have on mine, same thing. Um, all right. So we're on number eight. Signal interference. And um. That they uh next or sentence was added to um take reasonable steps to determine if their equipment is the reason for the intersper- interference. And to respond to the complaint. And then we should probably add and. Um, mitigate. The interference should they be that all.
What, what exactly are reasonable steps there?
But this is another one there.
It may curtail it, I'm sorry.
Right, curtail it, but the other one is like the signal interference, okay. Same thing with cell phones, I can drive on a sunny day between. McCoquita and the Jackson Dubuque County line and not have any problems with my cellphone. When we get cloudy days or, well, actually on some sunny days. You get towards just north at Hertzville and my signal goes away. So. How do we know? That it's caused by wind turbines? I mean, I, I, this is one I really have an issue with because we already have enough. Different things that go on between sunspots that go on and everything else. So we start putting up wind turbines and every signal interference is related to turbines.
So first, that'll be the first one.
That'll be the, that'll be the first one.
Wouldn't you just have to turn it off?
Potentially.
Yeah, I mean, you, but how do we know, how do we know for certain? I really, I really do have a hard time with with this because. There's a lot of signal interference that's already atmospherically. That happens between sunspots, between weather. Um, other things like that. We've all experienced issues with cell phones where we get into one spot and it works great. Um, depending on the day, south or crick. Um, I, cellphone is not a problem. Uh, other days, you start coming down and you lose signal. So I really have a problem with with this one altogether.
I agree with the cellphone thing totally, but the. But you're in like a moving car or something generally when you're dropping service. The wind turbine would be a constant, so why couldn't you? I don't know, turn it on and off over a period of days considering and trying to troubleshoot it that way. That's why I get back to the reasonable, reasonable steps, what what does that mean?
So we still, I know when I had um. Uh, like my satellite, when I used to have uh DirecTV. We have the same thing, we were stationary, but depending on the weather. I'm, I could lose signal based on um. Uh, the sunspots and things like that, the, when the satellites move. Um, so it's not just necessarily in a moving vehicle, it can be stationary as well. And it can, and it can deal with the atmospheric changes. So between storms, sunspots, things like that, so that's where I really have an issue with this.
I guess that's where I go back to the reasonable steps, because the wind turbine companies could. Blame it on all those things and not ever do any reasonable steps to see if they're at fault.
We can, that's something else I can research to see what a reasonable step step would look like.
That's great, Lori, thank you.
Yeah, because it does say they they receive a written complaint. Okay, yeah, take a look at that one.
Yeah, I, that's what we need to, we need to look at, I I just. Too many things can.
True.
A lot of things can combine together to create a perfect storm of disturbance.
Right. Right, the cell phones will.
Got him, no.
So a company will tell you you got a great service, right?
Well, and you know, some days, yeah, exactly.
Okay, so I have a note for that. And now we're down to number eleven when it comes to setbacks. Um. So originally, we had from property lines, setback from any neighboring carpet line. Shall be no less than fifteen hundred feet. Want you to just think about this. All right, adding the word any. Because we didn't have that before. And the reason I think we should have had that um. Is it's, it's better language since the assumption would be that it's any property owner. And not assuming that if it was a participating property owner next to her. That you could, that those lines, those fifteen hundred feet wouldn't wouldn't count. So that's why I'm thinking any neighboring property line, so let's say you two are next door neighbors and she had a wind turbine agreement. And uh huh, like that's gonna happen, and 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 Tom had a. Participating landowner, but at the same time. He couldn't make his setbacks without your property and vice versa. So that's where I think that. Any is a better choice. Than um just um having neighboring property lines. Just. Any. So there's no assumptions about participating property owners. Maybe I'm just over reading. Overthinking.
Does that make it more or less restrictive, though?
Makes it more restrictive.
More restrictive, okay. What about under the circumstance where you have a good neighbor agreement, you know, the guy with a windmill? You know, gives part of his payment to the neighbor, well, you know.
Well, the, the turbine company would be.
Turbine company would be involved. And and um, you know, so the neighbor is fine with it because he's getting paid.
Okay.
Does that take into account that?
Same, um, on the note here I have for me is note. Are you allowing setback waivers from adjoining property owners? So are, are. Are there gonna be waivers that you would grant if the neighbor comes in and says, hey? I don't mind if it's only twelve hundred feet or eight hundred feet for my property line. Cause it's my back forty. I can make a thousand dollars or three thousand dollars a year, you're taking away my right to make some, make some change. I mean, it's not affecting anybody but him, but it's a call where. I don't, you know, that's your guys' call, do you wanna allow waivers?
Right, property owners' rights away.
Mm-hmm, absolutely. But at the same time, and then depending on how close the setback would be. Um, that's, well, you're right, that's where the, if they get a waiver. Then the wind company would have to ask for a special exception on setbacks, providing it wasn't closer than. Fifty percent, so closer than um five hundred and seventy one feet, excuse me, seven hundred and fifty one feet. Yeah, cause it had to be.
So there would be some restrictions involved, so.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
I, I. Way back when this whole thing started. Um, I had thought that, you know, if this was gonna happen, and I had my doubts whether this. You know, we're gonna see any windmills in Jackson County, but if we were gonna see windmills in Jackson County. That there would be these good neighbor agreements that would make it work ea- you know, work easy or more easily, I shouldn't say easily. More easily, if um the neighbors were gonna get along, I don't know if that's gonna happen. But um that was in my mind, that would be wh- where we wanted to go.
Yeah, cause I don't um. Right now, from what I've seen. But after you take in the Great River Road, the scenic byways, now that's not even taken in the. The other mitigations, but. Fifteen hundred feet. I haven't found a use in agreement that can make it that's, that that's still left, which is only a handful.
Right.
Left, um. They, they can't make fifteen hundred feet. They don't have that land. So, man, I have a question. So when we're talking about um the good neighbor payout. Is that farmer signing a contract with that wind turbine company for that? Okay, so now in all of this liability, so if the turbine crashes, but I'm getting a payment. Now, am I going to have to pay the third neighbor that that fell on? Am I now responsible because I'm paying a payment?
That's not our responsibility, the liability is not.
But, you know, we're.
The zoning commission, the zoning board is not a liability board.
Right.
We're zoning only, we cannot take into account the liability. That's not our job.
Oh, you, you're.
So.
Your, your question, I understand what you're saying, and normally, you know, in a uh easement or a waiver agreement. You know, it would be between the farmer with a windmill in this case.
Right.
And then, so. So the, the short answer would be no, but it depends on what kind of agreement they sign or that they worked out.
So my question is, in all of our language, do we need to be stating? Not just the owner of the turbine, any individual with it, I'm just asking if our language needs to be specific. But it wouldn't be. On anybody else's land besides the person holding the easement agreement or lease agreement. But if I'm getting a payment and it crashes, but it goes on a third person's farm, now can that third person come after both of us?
That's a liability issue.
I know, but I'm just saying, in all of our, we've, we've said owner of the land, but we have to be more specific, I'm just asking. Hundred foot property line setback, even though if you're the person that signed it. About the setback, I'm just saying, we only talk about, we're only ever referencing. The land that the turbine is sitting on, do we have to reference anyone else associated with it? I'm just asking if that terminology has to be. Are you talking about a neighbor, if they were getting a good neighbor? Right, 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 I'm just asking if that term- terminology has to be in there.
Sure, I'm saying no.
You know.
Yeah, I know, I get where you're coming from, yeah, so I understand.
I'm just. Asking.
Yeah.
If that was an attorney question or not. Please.
It's being planned.
And just saying, no, I can see her screen, she has a lot of yellow.
The problem is, some of this stuff that we're actually talking about. The zoning board isn't responsible for.
It's probably the whole thing. I mean, the whole thing, because it's gonna end up in litigation and it's not up, but we're trying to write it, so.
We're trying to, but the problem is, we have to be mindful that. We are not responsible for the liability, we're responsible for the zoning only. And that's the, and that is the main issue that we need to be concerned with. Cause that's by law, that's what our responsibility is.
Moving on, will that an attorney answer it?
Exactly, I mean, that's, you know.
Okay, going back. Do we want to keep the word any in there? Yes, no?
I would say no, but. And I would say no.
Right, so remove it?
Yeah, let's remove it.
Okay. So that's under eleven A. All right, and then we need to go back um at some point and talk about waivers. Are you guys gonna allow them for property line setbacks? And then too, we need to just double check with John on that, if you guys are questioning it or double check with John.
I think we need to check with the, with the county attorney. Go ahead. I'm torn on that, whether we allow them or not, but we need to know whether we can say no waivers. That, I guess that's the, that's the question that we need to find out. Can we do it or not? And then, and then go from there.
Right.
We have a question about the waivers kind of throughout. Are they attached to the landowner? Uh, are they attached to the land? Can they be renegotiated if, like, I mean, we're not down to the shadow flicker, we're kinda on the sound. But if they decide after a year that, hey, this is really, you know, giving me headaches or whatever, can they renegotiate these waivers? Or are they permanent once they've requested them or signed them?
Well, the contract.
No, it, it's a contract, but like the Board of Adjustment can, oh, if we allow it in the ordinance, can do the waivers. And then the board, it would only be the Board of Adjustment. I don't know, can they reverse?
I mean, that's already there. I mean, how do you reverse it?
I don't know.
And I would.
I don't think they can.
A lot of those that I've read, depending on the reason for it, do go with the land. Um, so that any future property owner would know that the current property owner has um entered into a waiver agreement allowing closer setbacks.
Mr. Manson is on the ask on the Board of Adjustment issues. I don't know.
He probably has some technical.
But the waiver is being granted by the Board of Adjustment. The contract is with the company.
Yeah.
So we're talking two different things.
Correct, but yeah, cause the, the landlord asking for the waiver would also enter into a contract with the company.
But the waiver would be from the zoning.
Right, waiver is from Board of Adjustment.
So there's not a contract or a waiver.
Not with the county, but with.
Right.
With the turbine company.
Right, but the waiver, I mean, if that helps, Chris, is what I'm getting at. The waiver is not a contract. But after the waiver is granted, then the person would have a contract with the company.
Potentially.
If they so.
So, so if you say you've got a neighbor who has, has a turbine on their property, and you say, hey, I don't mind if you have, you know, shadow flicker on my, you know, on my property, and a waiver is requested, are you, what I guess is, if the guy finds out, you know, six months later, that he's having all sorts of health issues that may or may not be attributable to that, can they, can they go before the Board of Adjustment and say, I want out of this, or are they locked into it, or?
If you sign a contract with the windmill company on your land, I think you're stuck with the contract.
Or not.
Well, I thought this was a, I thought this was a waiver.
So you're talking about the waiver for the, for the neighbor?
From the board. Yes, yes.
What you're saying.
Yeah, not the contract.
Giving you the distance. Yeah, cause right now we're talking about the waiver for distance. That's it. We're not into sound, we're not into shadow flicker. We're, we're talking about waivers for setbacks from an adjoining property owner.
I just was lumping when uh waivers in, cause I had that general question throughout the entire ordinance.
Uh, got you.
I don't. Honestly, I don't know, because if you, if you request a waiver, it's requested from the Board of Adjustment. I do not know, and I think that's an answer for the county attorney. I don't know what's in the law for Board of Adjustment. So I don't think we can answer that one, Chris.
That's the one thing I just bring it back. So the waiver is saying, sure, I mean, we're talking setbacks. So if the, the landowner is like, hey, this is my back forty, shoot, if you're, you know, three hundred feet closer, I don't care. Um, after that turbine's up, it's up.
Yeah, but that's not the waiver.
Well, the waiver was already been granted.
Right, yeah.
Because they, they've already asked for the waiver and said the Board of Adjustment's granted, otherwise they wouldn't be able to get to do it. Right.
But it, it isn't the waiver that's causing, it's the contract that they signed, cause who cares? If they, they wouldn't have to reverse the waiver.
Right.
Because they are the ones that are taking that next step. But it's the contract that's the issue.
They decide the contract.
And that's the issue. Yeah, so I don't know that there'd be any need to reverse the waiver. Because you're the one that asked for the waiver.
I don't think you could.
Because the turbine or myself.
Yeah, it's already there.
Exactly.
Yeah.
You want re- you want request to reverse the waiver.
You wouldn't be able to, yeah. Okay.
Okay, that was painful. Um. Um.
This whole thing.
I know, I do agree.
Sorry about the pain.
No, that's okay. I'll live through it. Um. So. And that's where getting down to number E on twelve. Owners of adjacent property may voluntarily agree by written recorded waiver to a higher average hourly decibel as measured from any property line. So. And it's just, I have a note on there that um from the research I've done, waivers are not required, they're allowed by the ordinance. But we do need to. It's in yellow. So it will, it will go back to John there. So I'm gonna finish up on uh safety. Go to number K on safety, please. Okay, this is where we get into fire suppression. All turbines and substations shall be equipped with operational, automatic fire detection and fire suppression systems. The fires should, so man, suppression and detection system shall be designed appropriate to the materials and conditions present in the, and I need to change all that to WEX unit. Um, alarm signals from detection systems shall be transmitted to a central station proprietary or remote station service to a consistently attended location. Fire alarm and fire protection systems shall be installed in accordance with state and federal standards inspected by the state fire marshal prior to operation. Such fire suppression and detection equipment shall be tested and verified operational on an annual basis by personnel certified for such validation by independent third party chosen by Jackson, chosen by the county and paid for by the owner or operator. The report then to be turned into Jackson County for verification of compliance.
I had a question on this, Lori. So we've got central station and we've got constantly attended. Um, who operates the central station, who attends it? And then who is also, as the fire, are the fire departments also wired into this, into these alarm signals?
Okay, just going back to my experience um dispatching, there is a twenty-four hour a day monitored law center. So a lot of these systems are tied to a company, which would then um contact the Jackson County Law Center, and then the law center dispatches the fire departments. Cause remember, we don't have any twenty-four hour fire stations, so it would take a central dispatch to, to notify the appropriate fire agency.
So other than the onsite fire suppression systems that they're gonna be required, required to have, are the um turbine companies have any other uh way to fight these fires, or are they dependent on all the, like, would they be dependent on the volunteer fire departments throughout Jackson County?
Well, if there's a um detection suppression system there, that would hopefully take care of some of it, but yes, it would be dependent on um the volunteer fire department that would be in the area.
Will they contribute to the cost of uh putting out these fires if they're called on, or if the uh volunteer fire departments are called upon?
I don't know that.
All right.
Yeah, they won't be able to put it out anyway, and I think the, the systems that I think Don was talking about last week, so it's a monitoring and um suppression. So they have to be on it. So if a fire starts, they have to have a suppression system that will put the fire out. That is, that's the purpose of this.
Suppression.
And I'm gonna go back to something else you asked, Chris.
What's the difference?
After their discussion.
Pressure is not what fire out. It controls the fire.
So what, so.
Mike's a fireman.
Yes, so.
So suppression is just gonna say, let's say your barn catches on fire, they're gonna be able to keep it out of, without going.
Keep it under some.
Keep it under so much.
So they'll be able to contain it.
They'll be able to contain it to a certain point. They will not be able to. I, I'm, I don't know anything about winter break fires, but I'm guessing ninety-nine percent of them you're not gonna put out. They're gonna burn themselves.
They're gonna have to burn themselves out, so. So with the big suppression, so it will, it will contain it to the wind turbine.
It's suppression under normal circumstances, like a factory or something like that, is gonna keep it under control enough that when the fire department gets there, they might be able to put it out.
Well, we pretty much know that our fire departments are not gonna be able to put these out. I mean, it's just, it's.
There's nobody around, it's gonna be.
Right, and then hopefully they'd be able to do the, you know, prevent extra collateral damage and, you know, um.
Yeah, well, hopefully that's spread across the field or whatever, kind of thing.
Okay, and I'm gonna, oh, go ahead, Sandra, please. So I just would wonder if we should put and paid for by the owner or operator of the WEX. And then the next thing, the report be turned into Jackson County. Where in Jackson County? Your office? Supervisors? But it should say that, cause not just Jackson.
Sure, sure.
Um. Board of Supervisors right now.
There you go.
Um, and then I'm gonna.
Go, shouldn't they go to the law enforcement center? What's the, what the emergency management center?
She's asking about the, the report.
But shouldn't the report go there?
Are they the ones that are making sure they stay in compliance? Or is that, okay, no, I got you. Okay, I'm gonna answer Chris's question about if one of these turbines catches on fire, is the turbine company going to reimburse the fire departments for their service? I'm just gonna go back to, I'm a property owner, I pay property taxes. These two will have property taxes being paid on them that has tax dollars going to the fire departments in which are in their districts. So it's kinda like us. Yeah, we have a call, we know we're donating, donating extra money to the fire department's breakfast next time around.
Maybe.
But, well, most of us would.
Good time, all right.
Yeah. But um that's where they get their, their pay from. They have a um, a budget out of um the property tax dollars that goes to the fire departments. Okay. Are we still there? We need to go, can we go on to shadow flicker?
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, guys. You guys made some very significant changes on this. Um. Shadow flickers, flicker requirements to this section apply to non-participating property. An owner, developer. Um, I probably need to change that to operator. Shall design the proposed C WEX. And then too, we need to talk about the non-C WEX, because this, we're in, still in the C WEX part of this. Um, to produce zero hours of shadow flicker to be projected onto a neighboring property. This can be achieved through, this is to be achieved through shadow flicker computer modeling and curtailment of operations. And that's another spot. You can see I've knocked out a lot of this um wording on here, because it talked about thirty hours, thirty hours, and what to do if it's twenty hours. So that no longer seemed to apply. But we get down here into the triple I's. Written consent from an affected property owner, from affected property owners has been obtained stating they are aware of the C WEX and the shadow flicker limitations imposed by this ordinance. And that consent is granted to allow shadow flicker to exceed a maximum number of hours per year, otherwise allowed. And the advocate wishes the waiver to apply to succeeding owners. And it goes on, this is not new language, this has been part of it all the way through. But I just wanted to show that it talks about waivers and um knowing that it it exceeds basically zero hours, cause that's the maximum. But remember, we're basing this on the property line now, not a dwelling.
I think this is another one we need to get the county attorney and to determine whether or not we can allow the waivers or stop the waivers.
Sure.
So I think that's something that we need to before we, I know. Beck is gonna highlight yellow, I see. I made the whole thing yellow there. She has. Because we're talking about the waivers, but then we've also talked about, do we allow the waivers or not? Can we, can we ban waivers? Do we want them? Where do we want them? So I think we, we need that answered before we determine what we can, can and cannot do on that.
Okay. That's gonna take out like a whole page of our work that you guys, we're able to strike that. Um. Okay, avoidance, mitigation, and damage to public infrastructure. All right. Um. Inside your notebook. And we're close to the end of it there. Um, I received um an email from, from Jaden, our county, Jaden Sheple, he's our county engineer. And um here, I'll go ahead and bring you back there too. All right, so. Hang on here, my screen shows. Anyway, we will wait and see what Lori does have here. Okay, so basically, roads applicants shall identify the roads to be used for the purpose of transporting C WEX. Substation cars, concrete, components, steel, and all materials and or equipment for construction, operation, and maintenance of the C WEX and obtain applicable weight and size permits and empty the total truck trips per road section from the impacted road authorities prior to construction. The cemental shell occur a minimum of sixty days prior to the start of construction for re- review and approval of the identified roads. All repowered and decommissioned loads of scrap or waste material shall be disassembled. Okay, guys, here we're going. Um, about cutting our blades.
Well, that's not cutting, that's disassembled.
But.
But.
Well, it's not.
No, but.
Even both parts disassembled, I would say.
I don't.
I agree with Mike on that. I don't, I don't think, I don't.
I don't know that that's an option. I think they're solid tubular at a certain point, so we can check, but it, it could be disassembled, but it might be cutting to disassemble some of it.
That's.
Of the blades, not the the blades, but not necessarily the.
Not the top, not the tower, that's a disassembly.
Right, that's a disassembly.
Yeah.
All right, so the key.
Sorry.
Sorry, so, I'm sorry, the blades, I can't see how they would need to be cut up to be disassembled. When they're put up in individual pieces.
No, the blades go up as a whole.
Then why do they only?
Pardon?
Why does, why do the blades go down the road individually then?
They're one blade at a time, not three parts to it, so.
Don't you take them off the rotary part?
Yes.
That would be, yeah.
But a used blade does not travel down the roadway the same way. It is typically cut up. At the site and then moved in pieces rather than as a full blade.
I guess I understand that, but I don't understand why.
Would it by chance be anything to do with requiring a an extra DOT coverage for oversized loads? Where they would cut it to fit a normal semi, it'd be cheaper to.
I think it's cheaper, definitely.
It's standard practice, because it's cheaper.
Yeah.
Well, however, but wait a minute now, on the devil's advocate. Part of it, okay, so it's a damaged blade.
Right.
So. We're talking about all of the, you know, if you cut it up, the flakes of um. They'll come off when you, when you cut it up. If you've got a damaged. Blade. How do we know that if you take it down and drive it down the road? That the wind won't blow more flakes off?
I'm not saying they have to take it away that way, what I'm. I'm agreeing with Mike that, to me, disassembly isn't cutting. The blades up, so the language in there, I was agreeing with.
I'm just going with the language that apparently county engineer.
I wouldn't necessarily uh, agree with that, but.
Think some of it comes down into the next part of it, you guys.
Okay.
They're trying to keep the weight down, no loads shall exceed eighty thousand pounds on any road. This comes with the repowered or decommissioned loads of scrap and waste. And so there, it looks like they're trying to um. Keep the weight down, all those must be documented and recorded by the Jackson, by Jack, by Jackson County Onsite Inspector. During construction and or removal, the applicant will worry, will re- reimburse. Jackson County personnel for monitoring oversized overweight loads between January first and April fifteenth.
No over thirty.
No oversized, thank you. Uh, no oversized. Overweight loads between February first and April fifteen, if any daytime temperatures are greater. Than twenty-five degrees, see, is that written right?
Okay, but that conflicts with our cleanup. For immediate. If you have something that happens in the middle of February. And we want immediate cleanup, and we're putting in the fifteen days, however. The engineer's office says, hey, guess what?
But they're saying oversized, they're saying oversized, they could go undersized.
I understand that, but if we're talking about not cutting up blades, because we don't want them cut up on the property. We're also saying you can't store them.
I'm not, I'm not, I never said they couldn't cut the blades up, I said that they needed mitigate. We have some kind of mitigation language, so is it the, any fiberglass or whatever goes down? Downwind, I never said that they shouldn't cut the blades.
Or maybe there's some type of containment they do too, we don't really know.
That's what I'm talking about, we don't know.
Yeah, maybe there's something there.
And so if they don't cut them up and they can't store them on the property, but they can't. And and we've talked about them not storing. Any of them on the property, so even if they cut, you know, we could have an issue with that.
Well, so Sandra had it, in my mind, had it there, whereas, okay. It happens in the wintertime, they're gonna wanna keep the loads down during the wintertime to not wreck the roads. Um, so they would have to go with, they'd have to mitigate somehow any potential of downwind. Um, fiberglass going downwind, whatever, damaging neighbor's property, and they'd have to take smaller loads.
Until they get to a site where they're allowed to have the oversized load.
Right, then they could.
And then they load their truck.
They reload it.
County or the country or where they need to go.
Right.
It's not gonna be cheap, but it's a rule. So we'll hang his language so far.
Now that we've talked it out, I think, I think so. I mean, it makes sense to me.
I know it makes sense to you, but. I know, I know, I know, I know, but I also spent twenty-one years in transportation, I know how some of this stuff works.
Well, yeah, what, what?
What we do is put the rules down.
Yeah, I was gonna say.
You put the rules down and you let the litigation take over.
Yeah. To break the rules, that's on them.
It's not on us, you've been saying that. Okay, so, existing road conditions. The app- applicant shall conduct a pre-construction baseline survey, survey. Prepared by a qualified third party acceptable to the Jackson County engineer. To determine existing road conditions for assessing potential future damage. Baseline surveys shall not occur between February first. And April fifteenth, if daytime temperatures are greater than twenty-five degrees due to changing. Ground temperatures. Baseline survey shall occur a minimum of thirty days before construction. The survey shall include photographs and a written agreement including detailed information of pre-construction conditions. The applicant is responsible for ongoing road maintenance and dust control. Dust control identified by the Jackson County engineer during all phases of construction. Dust control on all aggregate roads used during construction shall be accomplished by application of calcium chloride. And add an industrial. Application rate of every eight weeks or as needed to control fugitive dust. Applicant, the applicant is responsible for any cost required to repair roads, bridges, and or culverts to pre-construction baseline conditions. Jackson County reserves the right to halt operations if road conditions deteriorate. To a point that creates a hazard to the traveling public. Applicants shall enter into a road use and repair agreement with the road authority. Prior to construction. Alright, now it gets good, you guys. A cash flow escrow account shall be opened by the applicant with the Jackson County. Treasure for road use and repair costs prior to construction and upon the approval of the C-Wex construction permit. Cash in escrow in the amount of twenty million dollars. The use of these funds post-construction will be identified and approved by the Jackson County engineer and board of supervisors. A second cash escrow account shall be opened by the applicant with the Jackson County treasure. Upon repu- approval of the C-Wex construction permit prior to construction for emergency. Road use and repair cost. Cash in escrow in the amount of three million dollars. The use of these funds shall be identified by the Jackson County engineer. For road use and repair emergencies relating to the preparation, construction, and maintenance. Of any permit approved C-Wex. If the third party hired by the applicant for road repair and maintenance is found to be. Negligent, funds shall be removed from the emergency cash escrow account to support timely repairs. By the Jackson County engineer. Cash amount escrow account shall be reviewed yearly to accommodate the rate of inflation. Additional money shall be added by the applicant. Due to the rate of inflation and changing expenses related to. Consistent road maintenance conditions, if the escrow account needs additional monies. The applicant has fourteen business days after receiving notice to comply. A surety bond of three million dollars will be obtained from a surety authorized by the Iowa Insurance Commissioner. Acceptable to Jackson County if the applicant fails to comply. The initial bond amount shall be the amount set in place for the emergency cash flow. Account upon approval to permit. Drainage systems, the applicant shall be responsible for immediate repair. Of drainage to public drainage systems, including driveway and roadway culverts and bridges stemming from construction, operation. Or maintenance of the C-Wex. Prior to construction of the C-Wex project, all existing drainage. Tile must be inspected by means of robotic camera. And all imagery submitted to the Jackson County zoning administrator. To establish a baseline condition of tile. Any drainage, excuse me, any damage or. Inoperable tile shall be repaired prior to construction of the C-Wex project. And such repairs shall be documented in a report submitted to the landowner. Excuse me, I lost my spot, reports submitted to the landowner and the Jackson County engineer indicating the location. Nature and unsatisfactory and satisfactory completion of such repairs. Su- support shall be constructed to preserve any drainage field tile or drainage system. While the C-Wex is in operation. All drain tile shall be inspected every three years in the fashion noted above and all video footage. Excuse me. I had to add that person, um. So Lori, there was I.
Right at the bottom of the, bottom of the.
Move your mouse up, right here, a little bit high. Higher, stop, down two lines. Go back up just a little bit, there, perfect. Alright, so while the C-Wex is in operation, all drain tiles shall be inspected every three years in the fashion. Noted above and all video footage and a report of any drainage or failure. Shall be submitted to the Jackson County Zoning Administrator. Any tile failure shall be corrected within thirty days of the discovery. And such repairs shall be documented and a report submitted to the landowner. And county indicating location, nature, and satisfactory completion of such repairs. The county reserves the right to have the inspector or other agent of the county present at the time of the repair. While the C-Wex is in operation. As well as during decommissioning, if any repair is not completed within thirty days. Other reported damage failure, the applicant shall be fined ten thousand dollars per infraction per day. And shall be retroactive to the date of the initial report. And damage failure due to final completion date. Um, Becca, take that paragraph and do me a yellow on that, because um. Question of where they give their authority for fines. Okay, because that's a fine you guys would like to see, and I wanna know how we can get that.
Right, because we might not be able to do that.
Yeah. Okay, a cash escrow account, ma'am?
Oh, I just uh, wanted to know if you could email me a copy of that, since I can't see it. Uh, if you could email a copy of it.
I'm, I'm.
Whenever you get a chance.
My screen sharing is not, I'm having it this year. I think I emailed it to you already, Chris.
Uh, wait a minute, multiple participants can share simultaneously, click on the second one, right there.
But I shouldn't have anybody else participating. But I'm gonna keep going, we'll send it to you, Chris, okay, Chris, you might, did you see your email that I sent at five o'clock?
Probably not, no.
Okay, it's in there.
I'll look right now.
Okay, okay. Um, a cash escrow account shall be opened by the applicant with the Jackson County treasure upon approval of the C-Wex construction permit. Prior to the construction for emergency drainage system. Damage and repair costs, cash in escrow in the amount of three million dollars. The use of these funds will be identified by the Jackson County engineer for drainage, damage, and repair emergencies. Relating to the preparation, construction, and maintenance of any permit approved C-Wex. If the third party hired by the applicant is found to be negligent, funds will be removed from the emergency cash flow account. To support timely repairs by the Jackson County engineer.
The one concern that I have in story. So if you scroll back up.
For the drainage.
Drainage systems.
Got it?
Okay, um. About.
Oh, and mind you guys, I didn't get this till like really late today, I didn't have time to run up, date my draft.
No, I know that.
Okay.
My question with the engineer. When it goes to, let me see if I can find the line, um. When it talks about support shall be constructed. To preserve any drainage field tile and or drainage system, that's great, however. When it says, while the C-Wex is in operation, all drain tiles shall be inspected every three years. Are they talking about the field drain system tile every three years?
Says any.
That, I mean. I don't, we don't have any drain tile in our fields.
But, but, but I, I have heard a lot of complaints in reading this stuff where there is field tile. Um, with all the heavy equipment and all the uh, operation, uh, tile is a concern, plugging tile is a concern.
With the original inspection before everything starts, yes, I agree with that. But every three years.
That's, that's tiling on your own personal property.
Yeah, why is the county? That's what I was getting at.
The, the way I understood it was because the, some counties have experienced problems with plugging firm. Tile, farmer's tiles from the traffic involved in one of these things.
But go back, because if they're, if they're building it, okay. If you're gonna continually monitor the drain tile during construction, I get it. Um, it should be monitored to make sure the drain, the drain tile stays open. But it talks about it doing it every three years.
But that actually should be the county responsibility.
That, that's what I'm getting at.
Even during construction, it shouldn't be.
What, yeah, why are we, why are we requiring that, is it, that's another, the landowner.
I can see if, if there's tile in the, along the road. Shoulder draining, I understand that, but if it's field tile.
That, exactly.
And thus they're calling field tile, would you actually use field tile along the road?
In the right way, that's, that's all by the county.
Yeah, yeah.
If it's all by the county, I get it.
It's actually tile that's in.
That's what I wanna get clarification.
I just sent him a quick text to see if he'll respond right now.
Because that, I mean. There's a lot of things that can cause, you know, your field tile. Anyway, so let's get clarification from the county engineer on that one. For things settle on the rock, I mean, that's just it.
I, I, I get what you're saying with the three-year deal, but. Yeah, initially and shortly after construction, I think it's very important.
But during construction, here's my point. Why is the county worried about it during construction? If it is a farmer's field tile, that is something that should be in the contract between the farmer and the wind.
I think what I'm talking about is the neighbor down the road who these big trucks are coming down. And the pressure on the roads is affecting the drainage on their field tile. So I'm not talking about the guy who.
That's a stretch.
I, I heard.
That's a stretch.
That's been a complaint.
Well, we'll, we'll get to the bottom of it, okay, and that way we understand what we're, what we're actually. Um, so we won't make any.
Yeah, let's, let's not do anything until we get um, something back from Jayden on that one.
So that was, you can get a ton of this. Yay, I'm back on sharing, I don't know why it didn't want me to do that, you guys. Sorry. Okay. Um, we're on page twelve. Existing road conditions, we're just gonna bypass all of that.
Yeah, that's good, yeah, let's.
Hang on here, I think I might have numbered wrong something here. Just noticed. Six. Seven, okay, so wildlife mitigation.
Wait a minute, would these, yeah.
Section six.
Section six. Are we talking about that enough?
Oh, excuse me, so, alright, section six.
I, I really think, and we're, we're waiting for John to come back on that one, right?
Mm-hmm, yeah, and, um. Yeah, because this is one of the part, parts of the ordinance where we're questioning what is the role of county government?
Right.
And why are we getting into the, um. Being responsible for the decommissioning, not the landowner, the turbines on their land, not the counties, who really has the culpability here?
Right.
Okay.
Yep.
Alright, so.
Oh, I just want to say one thing about the culpability, whether the landowner is responsible for. Parts of the decommissioning and the things underground, what about, um, the. Electrical cables that run from the turbine across the land. Um, how they are. Because I understand that if you cut it at the windmill, it's still a live line unless it's. Uh, cut at the, uh. Whatever, the grid. Do you know anything about that, Mike?
No. I would, I would think that it should be not an issue, but we surely think to, would not clean live layers. Underground anywhere, so, because it would shortage everything, short the whole system out, so. I mean, I, I don't think.
I didn't know if they had to be removed as well.
Oh, it'd be, no, I would think they could, no. They should be buried deep enough, they shouldn't be an issue, that should be the landowner thing also, I would think.
I think they're only required to be buried no less than forty-eight inches. And I don't know if some farm equipment, well, again, that goes back to the landowner. But I don't know if some of the farm equipment can get caught on that, I just was concerned if they were. Left live even though they were disconnected at where the turbine was.
Farmers farmed over and the whole kind of, they're buried, that windmill was being used, so.
Um.
Okay.
So remove the seawax at the end of their service, serviceable life, upon becoming discontinued. In use or in case a catastrophic fa- failure, the soil grade shall also be restored. Finally disturbance caused by removal process. Cause should be made by professional engineer and skip them down, identify financial sources, you know what? Um. We're gonna wonder, see if it's somewhere else. In the ordinance, because it doesn't talk about. I, I thought it was somewhere in here, because I know I've seen it, um, about. Removing, moving cabling and, um. There was something about removing cables.
I think you're, I think you're right now that you've said that. In the decommissioning.
Mm-hmm, right, so we're gonna look at that. Um, because I think there's something that's not right here. Um. And then you can see I still have a, um, a question out, um. When it comes to that, um. And still in number one before we get to number two, um, question the county attorney.
Right.
So we're gonna get that, and we'll see if this was Jayden responding to our question. He thinks it's to both. I'll tell him we'll talk tomorrow.
Yeah, because we need to, we need to get clarification on that.
Okay. Okay. Alright, alright, so the wildlife mitigation plan, I don't think we had any changes to that part, um. Oh, there is a few changes, okay, I'm sorry, number two. Of the, um, wildlife mitigation plan, um. There was talk when we had our meeting last time about, um, making sure we had the cost of the owner.
I think we need to identify the owner as a.
What?
Seawax owner.
Okay.
Because that could be the property owner, and I think it should be on the seawex.
Okay. Alright, so seawax owner, um, is conducted by a thirty, third party. And we need, actually, that needs to be changes for three years. For three years, and then every three years following completion of the project.
Right.
Okay. You guys just want to read that, I'm tired of reading.
Lori, on that where it says conducted by a third-party licensed professional every three years following completion. Of the construction, pro- project construction phase, do we want to add in there, um. During, something about during operational phase? Every three years during the operational phase?
We do.
It's following the completion of the project.
Follow them, I'll be back later, thank you.
Okay.
Actually, let's, I hate to do it, let's take a five-minute break.
I'm a time, I'm way ahead of you.
That's. That's the benefit of being on Zoom.
Yeah. So I should only hear microphone, not say hairbrush.
Hey, John, I see where you just joined, um, we're taking just a quick. But, but stick around, okay? Or shut it, I'm just saying, is that the?
But, but the project can extend out more than actually three days, but they got.
Okay, so they get their forty-five days.
Right, something has to be started. Yeah, but the cleanup might have to be taken down. There might be stuff that's thrown out. Right, right, but we're saying over here, they have to have. So I'm just saying, it's a waste. What are we?
I don't have much choice.
I think whatever, anyway, stuff and boxes. But there's that many touchdowns, necessarily. That's the way it's just.
Yeah.
Down with this crap. Yeah, I just want to make sure. You can want to talk early, and you guys. I'll do what I need to do, okay? And I think that, I'm saying you were going to get somewhere spell checking.
Yeah. What's going on?
I'm just saying the other day, fear. I know we're saying perennial grasses.
Definitely.
I'm thinking Sierra. It has to be at a certain price, it has to be in certain.
Yeah, it's up the way out.
I mean, the answer is that, because they, they have proportion. I mean, did you, because they had a recommendation? You guys know what I'm saying?
Okay.
It's been quite a, it's been insane, I drew it out there. You know.
We were talking, that was our side conversation was, you know, this is like CRP, you know, when we, on the M B C. Monitor that, they, you know, they come out, they make sure that they. An appropriate, um. Who's gonna monitor that as well?
Send you that language, okay, to finish wording this bridge. Alright, and board, we have Mr. May Manson with us now, we have. A full house, so we have our whole board here. So, John, we've made it through page fifteen. Yeah, yes.
You're on, you're on mute, John, we can't hear what you're saying.
You're gonna have to unmute, John. That could be too.
Alright.
Okay, so we're on water quality protections in section eight. And John, I'm not, you have a, does he have this? No, he doesn't, so you're just gonna have to find section eight, it'll probably be somewhere on your notes around page thirteen or fourteen, I'm guessing.
Okay.
Okay, so the seawex cannot be built within a thousand feet of an.
Page fifteen, John.
No, his is actually different than ours.
His, his is different, oh, minus six.
Yeah, he doesn't have my notes.
Got it.
He has the ordinance.
Got it.
But not my talking points.
Okay.
Okay, so the seawex should not be built within a thousand feet of a known mapped sensitive area. Which we talked about that before, John, we have a, um, new definition that describes sensitive areas. Um, and I'll just get, reiterate what that was. A geographic area defined by natural features where there is a significant risk of groundwater deg- degradation. From activities conducted at, under, or near the land surface. A sensitive area includes but not limited to sinkholes, rivers, streams, creeks, natural springs. Lakes, farm ponds, and we're adding the term public water supply to that. So a seawex built within one thousand three hundred and twenty feet. From a known sens- from no, from a known sensitive area must adhere to water protection plan. Which includes installing and maintaining a buffer strip of perennial grasses and or native trees. With a minimum of thirty-foot width around the sensitive area. And a timeline for completion within thirty days of the erection. Within thirty days of. Excuse me, completed before. Uh, what was the word, um, commencement of operation?
Yeah, but I think from completion of, of the turbine, because I don't think.
I mean, because it could be, it doesn't have, it needs to be completed before the operation of the turbine starts.
It needs to be, yeah.
It doesn't need to be a cer- certain number of days.
It just needs to be completed prior to operation.
Right. If there are more restrictive water quality setbacks. Setbacks issued by the state or other national regulatory agency, that will supersede as part of the ordinance.
We need that on the ground.
Okay, um, question, because I was just talking to two farmers here that are familiar with seeding and seeding rates. Um, will you two get with me or send me your recommendations about? How much, um, of the native grasses or, um, a density?
Yeah, the F S A's got it.
Okay, or density of the native trees, please.
Yeah, N R C S has got it on.
It'd be just, in, in, kind of like what Sandra and I were talking about is. It'd be just like if you're seeding down or had a CRP, um.
Right.
Uh, plot.
Okay. Um, anyway, yeah, I know we had talked initially about sinkholes, but we had concerns about water quality. And, um, so after digging, digging that, digging deeper. It seems sinkholes are only part of what we were focusing on as it pertains to water quality preservation. Also broader language around waterways addresses concerns that were mentioned in our last two meetings. So then, are we good on this? Can we go to the next one?
Alright, I think so.
Okay, so.
No, I, instead of just putting down that we put X amount of, pounds of seed on, we just don't go put in there. Go by F S A.
Yeah, that's why we're doing.
Guidelines.
The state and national.
Or, or N R A C S.
N R C, whatever, whatever required, using their guidelines for buffer strips.
I think N R C S, so go by N R C S.
Okay, so just use that language and then who's monitoring it and. And making sure it's made, um, it's being maintained and that we're not getting weeds and all that other nasty stuff.
There'd never be weeds in CRP.
Good luck with that.
Yeah, in this buffer strip.
And the same with the trees, there has to be a tree seeding rate.
Yeah.
Everybody has to make sure those trees come, but again, who, who is going to?
Yeah, that's the other thing, I don't know.
Nobody. Who is? Nobody.
So. I mean, because really the county can't really monitor that because, um, we're not, um. We don't, we don't have. Putting demands on people. I mean, you know, either we're doing it or we're not doing it, so here we are, we're putting demands on something that. That we can't monitor. Right, so, I mean, it's sort of back to the question, how can we do that? We can do one thing, but can't do another.
Well, but this is different because it's. Well, but this is different because it's putting different protections in place.
Right.
I mean, it's, it's a condition of application.
But if nobody's paying attention to it. It's putting words in there.
Yeah.
That are meaningless.
Well.
John, what were you gonna say?
Uh, I'm just listening to the seeding of the CRP and I. I've had to do it two or three times myself and. Um, it gets a little ridiculous.
This would be for the water quality protections of. And there was a turbine being built within thirteen hundred and twenty feet of a known, um. Um, sinkhole. What, uh, river, stream, pond. Creek, um. Uh, or public water supply.
So are you, are you gonna just go by recommendations from some other entity or, uh? How are you gonna determine the seeding regulations? I, I missed that.
That's by N R C S, that's what we want to put in.
Okay.
Problem that we're running into is who's gonna monitor this?
Yeah, okay. Lori can monitor that.
Maybe we have to ask N R C S before putting their name in there.
Yeah.
Yeah, you can.
Find it off the website. I mean, the regulations off the website. Okay, but they're going, I mean, they're all specific.
Right, um.
Yeah, because we, what we.
Yeah, there, there, there are, there is not one standard seeding rate.
No.
It depends on soil types and slopes and all of that stuff.
Oh, well.
What we seed on our CRP ground in Boone County is different than what we seed on our CRP ground up here.
Okay, so are we over our heads on this?
Right, are they willing to do that? That's what I'm saying, do we have?
Well, yeah.
And our C S.
Is the landowner gonna have to be?
Right, right, that's what I'm saying.
This is, this to me is not the landowner. This is. For application, and it's not the landowner applying, it's the turbine.
Understand.
But the problem is they. Right. And it wouldn't be, I mean, maybe it could be concerned CRP, I don't know, but, um. It's one that.
Something we might need to come back to.
Yeah, let's come back, let's come back to that.
Yeah, yeah, we, we, we can say by N R C, N R C S rates. Without getting them involved.
Right.
But then we come back.
What?
Yeah, well, that's.
Rates for what?
For what?
Right, 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 recommendations.
For what?
Yeah.
Because it's a CP one or a CP.
Right, right.
Those are different seeding rates.
Because when we, yeah, because when we renew CRP contracts, there's been times where we've had to dig, where we've had to rip everything up and replant because it wasn't the. It's not the same as what it was, you know, ten years ago when we put it under CRP, so. Um. Yeah, that's something we need to look at. Okay, let's go on.
All right, so. We were ready to go into state and national scenic byway visual resource protection areas. So this new, is new, you guys, it's in, it's in red, so we know we have, um. Website moved down too far. So no seawax shall be allowed within five miles of the center line. From each side of a scenic byway. It recognizes that Jackson County has the Grant Wood Scenic Byway that traverses east and west across the county. And the National Great River Road that runs completely north and south through the county. Grant Wood Scenic Byway is a state designated scenic byway in Jackson County. Jackson County being the southernmost part of the Drake West region offers panoramic views of the area. That provide all I wonder to all those who may have believed that Al Iowa is black farm ground. The. Iowa Great River Road traverses along the entire east border of the county. It prim- it is primarily situated along the Mississippi, Mississippi River and Manly Fowles Highway fifty-two. Well, we know it hits parts sixty-seven, but it's only, it's primarily six fifty-two. This is part of the National Scenic Byway. The part of the byway that goes, which goes through Jackson County, Iowa, is surrounded by a mix of rolling hills, towering bluffs. Lush crop grounds, sandy, sandy quarries, a large wildlife management area, and loads of history. The two thousand fifteen corridor management plan for the Iowa Great River Road outlines many targeted actions to conserve, conserve, maintain, develop, and promote. The part of the National Scenic Byway that is in Iowa. Some, some of which include all levels of government. Invest to conserve, develop, and promote the Iowa Great River Road corridor. So I think. A, a lot of this, um. Other counties haven't. Been, been introduced to the Great River Road or the corridor management plan. For the counties, the, the ten counties that border Mississippi River.
Right.
Um, I like this, I think it's. Wise, and I don't think it's too much. I don't know, what does everybody else think of this?
Don't have a problem with it all. Um, here, let me, let me just go back to, I told you I might have to come back to this. So the purpose of this ordinance. Is to establish guy- guidelines for siting, design, construction. While balancing the concerns of preserving the natural beauty, visual resources, protecting natural resources. Water quality and the wildlife of Jackson County. I know the, that section's wordy. But I think it explains why we're putting the protections where we are.
That's, that's exactly what I was gonna say. It's, it's wordy, but it, it goes to the point of why we're doing what we're doing.
Right.
And so.
It ties it back in.
Yeah, it ties it back in.
It brings it full circle and, and it, it shows that we're not being arbitrary. In, in some of the decisions that we're doing here.
Yep.
All right. So are we good, or do you want to take a vote on it if?
I, I will say that awe is spelled A W E and not A W W.
Yeah, it depends on how tired I was when I wrote it. Fixed, I think, here.
Yeah, let's go on to that.
Like that would spell awe.
Okay, I gotta find it. A W E, got it. And you got that too, and you got it in yellow. All right. So, um, and I did put a note, um. Earlier that I changed the number into sections. Um, so sections eight, nine, and ten were added here. And the other sections were pushed down because it made sense to keep everything that pertained to seawax together. Because the others start talking about, um, non-commercial. So section ten, develop buffers around incorporated city limits within Jackson County. It's recognized that three cities in Jackson County have co-jurisdiction over subdivisions, including Placid Surveys. Within two miles of other cities, Preston, Bellevue, and Macau.
Take the period out after Macau to place.
Okay.
Cities is spelled wrong.
Yeah, cities is wrong.
Certainly is.
Thank you.
This co-jurisdiction approval is to prevent locking up land for potential future city expansion. Other towns in the county have passed resolutions. Asking for buffers around their towns for seawax development. To maintain a consistent buffer around the communities in our county. As not to impede future expansions. To allow for possible future city developments, no seawax shall be built within two miles of an incorporated city limits. This is suggested language. There was discussion about three miles, there was discussion. How do we follow the three resolutions that are in place? And by their way, they're in the back of your book.
Right.
And, because mile, God, five miles, Brenda? Three, and then I.
Preston had five, didn't they?
Preston had five then.
And ten.
And, yes, Sabula has not passed theirs yet.
Okay.
Theirs was still a draft.
But there's also legislation, there's, there's also a law, bear worry, help me out, because we talked about it. Um. That we may not be able to do more than two miles.
Yeah, I thought we were gonna have that checked out, because I was for three, and there was question about whether we could do that.
Right.
And that's one that's still hanging out there.
So we need to, we need to figure that out because we think that there, we have found legislation that. We cannot go over two miles, so we need to verify that with the.
If we can't go over two miles, you know, we can't go over two miles. But if we.
Is that state legislation?
Yes, it is, Chris.
We're, we're, we're gonna verify all that.
Yeah.
So we're gonna wait on that.
Yep.
So this is still draft language then, or excuse me, pending.
Right.
Okay. Um. So, yeah, no matter what we decide, you know, it has, we got to make sure that's right.
Right.
So.
Yeah, right, you gotta, yeah.
Yeah, and I just. Threw a number in there, knowing that we didn't have a number.
Right.
Um, and it was based off, um, that I would go, that I was having about co-jurisdiction.
Okay.
All right. And this is coming back down now into number eleven about the non-commercial. Um. So I think. We, we need to decide, is this. Going to stay here? Because we have some contradictory language. About, um. In number three. Non-sewax units will be treated as accessory structures in A one, M two, M one, and C one. So if that's treated as an accessory structure. That would be used under our accessory structure language in there. We need to move it out of here.
Can we take it out altogether?
Yeah, I believe so, um, because it needs to, well. We can move it out of here. If we did, it would still be. Under our conditional use. Until that new ordinance gets done. Which, um, you guys, so here, that, I'll just bring it up right now. Um, I did have, um, ECIA wanted to present it to the Board of Supervisors tomorrow during their meeting. Um, we have.
We're allowing for.
I know.
We have to push it back until. The week from Tuesday to get the contract approved. And it's a draft contract right now, um. Which lays out. A rewrite of our regular ordinance. It keeps out wind turbines. Um, commercial wind turbines, commercial, um, utility scale solar and, um. Utility battery storage.
We're all gonna get it all done by June?
No, end of August.
I know.
End of August is what the contract says, but it's a rewrite, so.
We're gonna get our stuff done by June, but we're gonna get that public period.
Yeah. So, um, that's part of it, but. Um, I can relook at this all over again. And just, but in that language for siting, we, we have this call us, um. Um, like I said, where were we? Accessory. Treat as accessory structures in A one, M one, and M two. Which, um, there might be some things in this language that. Holds it, it, it contradicts each other.
Yeah. I, I kind of like the idea of pulling the. The two apart, you know.
I, I think we should.
Yeah.
Um. I, I really do.
Then there's not, there's not as much confusion, I'm not gonna say there's not confusion, but if we keep them separate.
You know, I think it would be easier to.
Administer, um. Yeah, because right now, this, I mean, this says, um. Accessory, but there was, where was our language in here about? Well, it's spelling out other, other things that wouldn't be. In accessory. Use language in. C one and one.
I, I think we need to pull it out, I really do, because it's, I think there'll be too much confusion on it.
And then what we would do is add that to the new. Ordinance under, um, either. Well, it says accessory, we can rewrite it and still make it conditional use if we needed to.
I, I think that's what we need to look at.
We're gonna throw solar and batteries in there.
No, that's a separate ordinance, not the rewrite.
No, 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 I'm, I'm, we were laughing about it much, we got this to do in the next few months, yeah. No, 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 she's right, it's August, it's an August timeline.
It's for the rewrite, it's, I think they set the, um, the timeline to like August thirtieth. Um. And Becca's gonna be doing the administrative part of that.
She'll quit by then.
Oh, no. Everybody's tired of your chair. Okay, all right, so we'll move that. Okay. And the rest of it, we haven't, I mean, everything is, is, um.
This kind of boilerplate stuff is. Which we've learned that some of that boilerplate stuff, um, we need to watch.
Very well, because some of that is.
Um, okay, let's get back to the agenda.
All right. So. Yes, we do have it agenda.
Or the, the notice of public.
Right. So. We will not, obviously, we won't be sending this to the. Fourth of November, maybe January, but, um, anyway. We will take public comments on anything except the wind ordinance. Um, since this was a work session on the wind ordinance, so if there's, or if there are any other items. That the public would like to discuss, we will give people three minutes to talk about.
I have a question, not so much of talking, but. Guys, uh, we're work, we're going to work on, um. Like a data mining facility, whatever that's called. Now you talked about the battery stuff, you guys talked about the solar stuff. I was reading paper that you explored that, is that because you had somebody who wants to like apply and get that going with the project? Or you just see that like somewhere a hundred right then? That you decided.
Let me grab it?
Yeah, I'll let you grab that one.
Okay. Yes, there's, um, there's, um, one company that, well, here, let me get the whole history, so I don't just jump in in the middle. Um, we were first reached out to, um, by a company called U R Energy. They're a Iowa-based company ran by a father and his daughter. And they have, it's, it's bitcoining, data mining is what they do. And they use what's called stranded energy. Um, and I did make a couple of phone calls and talked to Nick, is it Nick Schultz?
Schultz.
Schultz from, um, the Coca-Cola Valley Electric, just to get their input, um. Because the, um, that first company did drop their name. And he had said it's not a drain on the system, they use what's called stranded energy, they have certain. Certain drop dead times that they have to totally shut down. They are not allowed to, um, put a drain on the system, and if I'm misspeaking any of the. Macau to Valley language type, you know, the technical stuff. All right, so, but. They have no concerns about. About those type of companies. They do use a lot of, a lot of power. But they're also shut down to where they're limited. So they're not taking power away from the other users.
Like twenty-four seven or something like that.
They, they would do curtailment at certain. And also they said that they don't run during certain times because it's not cost effective, so during peak times.
But the, the way, the way it would work with most of these is they have direct communications with MISO, which is the bigger. Grid that covers our area, and they would get signals from MISO. That would tell them when they could or couldn't run. To not, you know, not put too much of a strain on the system.
I'm familiar with data mining to a certain extent, but not such a large scale, so, so. In the meantime, after letting these people apply and set up and shop and whatever, will you, do you think they'll go back to redeveloping or creating some sort of ordinance around it? Like, where do you guys think that would?
So right, right now, there was a moratorium put in place, and then it was lifted.
Yes.
Um, the board supervisors at first did not feel that they had enough information about those type of industries. To be able to allow. Um, and it would actually would come in as, um, special. Um, like basically conditional use, it would, and the way our ordinance is written, it's a two-part. It would have to go through the. It would have to go through the zoning commission to determine what the zoning needed to be for that particular. Area and for that operation, and then it would go through the board of adjustment process to to set those conditions. Because it's not regulated in the ordinance, so they would be setting conditions that this company would have to abide by. And we um. Literally, it was two hours after the board of supervisors rescinded or. We pretty much rescinded the the moratorium that I got an email from a company that I had never heard of before. With a property in mind that they were looking. And I asked her, I says, are you working with so-and-so? No, I don't know who that is. And I says, well, we just had a moratorium on these type of operations, she says, oh, I didn't know that. And I don't think our video went live yet. So our went to the, I don't think our video had even made it to the internet. So I think it was, it could have been just timing that they were, you know. But so now there's at least two companies looking at Jackson County. And there's, there are multiple sites, they're all rural, they're all right next to um a substation. You know, will they have footprint approximately things like this would be, just curious, um, from what I've seen, small, I mean, not. Not like the size of this building or anything like that, um, some of them are just containerized type. Um, I mean fancy containers, um, but they're.
They're, they're all containers.
Okay.
No, there's different styles of containers, but it's all container-based.
Okay.
Yeah, I have a friend who has one of those kitchen counter, it's basically a small little trailer.
See, they're bigger than that.
Well, I kind of have a question here, um, and it does pertain to navigation easement.
And.
And that's that.
I'm sorry, what?
We can't even talk about it.
I'm sorry, what?
Navigation easement.
Navigation?
Aviation.
Oh, aviation, okay.
Yeah, it's called navigation easement and it's understand what your orders are, that we can't talk about it, but if we don't talk about it.
If you would put a comment in, because these are still work sessions, we're, we're not ready. We're obviously not ready to send the final on.
Well, this would be, this would be preliminary because there's so much information out there, Jim has a lot of it that I've given to her, and so has Joe. But if we don't talk about it in the future, we might scramble at the very end, and something gets missed, dismissed. Or missed in the procedure, then if somebody has a mirror out here that's gonna leave this county, you guys. And this airport commission out here scrambling to figure out how you're gonna be in bills for litigation, is that serious?
If you would have put a comment at Lori, that'd be fine, but yeah, we're not, we're not, we're not, we're not gonna discuss it. Because it's part of the wind energy, we're not gonna, we're, we're not gonna discuss it.
You're not allowed to.
We're not.
Would you like to email that, please?
Probably, yes. At that, well, what happened is it is so complicated and complex. If I put in an email, you guys would be looking for.
Will you consult me and maybe I can kind of show you something that might ease your mind?
Well.
No, stop, no, wait, wait, stop, stop right now, because I don't want to violate any public laws. Our agenda is only towards non-wind energy. So I don't want to discuss any of it here because I don't want to have an open meeting violation.
I see.
So that's, so that's why, it, we restricted it to other than what's on the agenda. So that's why we really.
Can't talk about.
So we can't, so we can't, we cannot talk about it in this meeting because it is not up on the agenda.
I apologize for that, but this is critical.
I, I, I'm sure you believe it is, I'm not saying it's not, it's not something that we can discuss right now. So, all right, no, that's. Go talk to Lori about it, yes.
Yeah, a letter, or do you want to come visit me?
Oh, I'd love to.
I'm gonna give you my phone number.
I I'd love to, and I've got fingers slung down at the airport. More in the air than on the ground. I'm, thanks an awful lot, Asher, appreciate that.
Yes.
All right, does the committee have any other thing that they would like to add? Do you guys have anything?
I wish I didn't have to say we were having a meeting in November, um, but we are.
December.
Or December, and um we likely have two cases in front of us. On top of this. They, those others will go first, yes, they will be at the top of our agenda and that will be on Monday, December sixteenth. At six P M, this location. Yeah, both of them are still up in the air, but I'll know by Thursday four P M if they're gonna both come to fruition or one's gonna come to fruition.
All right, do we have any other business or anything like that? Lori?
No.
I have a motion, do I have a second, one second? All in favor?
Hi, hi.
Hi.
Hey, Lori.
Bye-bye, thank you, John.
Hi, John, thanks.
Yeah.